Are you ready?
Okay, a welcome everyone. It is January 29th. We are gathering today for our annual data presentation. And with that, I call the meeting to order. Roll call, Mrs. Widener.
Dr. Campley.
Here.
Mr. Fountain.
Here.
Mr. Keenan.
Here.
Mr. Liggett.
Here.
Mr. McKinney.
Here.
Mrs. Sadler.
Here.
Mr. Saylor.
Here.
Dr. Weston.
Here.
Ms. White.
Here. Everyone, please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dr. Weston, would you be able to read the Perkyum Valley mission statement?
Yes. Thank you. The mission of the Perkyum Valley School District is to cultivate an inclusive community of learners empowered to grow intellectually, socially, and emotionally.
Thank you, Dr. Weston. 1.05, comments on any topic. Does anyone in the public, I think only Mrs. Mayers is here today for us in the public. Hello, Mrs. Mayers, would like to speak. Okay, all good. Moving on to the data presentation, 2.01. Thank you, Dr. Russell.
Thank you, Ms. White. And I'm going to pull up the slides and then I'm actually going to stand and deliver this presentation. I have a clicker. And throughout the presentation, as I've mentioned to our board, but I'll put on the record, this is an abbreviated version of the data presentation this year, intended to be a high-level presentation of how our students are doing, how they're performing on some of the high-stakes assessments that they participate in, as well as some of the other aspects and areas of their school experience. There is a full presentation, a more comprehensive presentation with lots more detail, that's also posted in the public if you're interested. So with that, I'm going to stand up and also let you know there will be various administrators who will come from their seats and participate in the conversation. So it won't all just be my voice that you hear, but you'll hear from some of our team members as well. And we'll take questions at the end of the presentation, if that would be okay with everyone. So with that. So more formally, this slide outlines the purpose of this presentation. I've just summarized that. We will ultimately present to you the data that we gather, again, at a high level, as well as recommendations that those data drive us to consider as administrators that we believe will support continuous improvement on the part of our students. We'll also talk to you a little bit about the action steps that we take as educators within our buildings, within our departments, and systemically, or as systems that serve the district. Just some demographic data. You can see how the enrollments are trending over time. They continue to trend downward. You can see how race and ethnicity have changed over time as well. We see a more dramatic increase in our Hispanic population and a decrease in the population of whites in our district over the past 10 years or so. I want to also call out that this year, we are comparing ourselves as a school district differently than what we've done in the past. In the past, we have compared ourselves to contiguous school districts, those that border or touch the boundaries of Perkyum Valley. This year, we have our data warehouse system that set up comparison groups a little bit differently, and we appreciated their approach. The first comparison group represents districts across the Commonwealth that have economically disadvantaged percentages between 10 and 20 percent. We are at 19. So we are comparing ourselves in some of these slides to districts considered to be sort of like us because their percentage of free and reduced lunch participation, or economic disadvantage, is similar. It's within that 10 to 20 percent band. We'll also see comparisons of our district to those districts that comprise Montgomery County, as well as across the Commonwealth. So we're going to start this year with the end in mind. Where is administration going with some of the suggestions that it's making? This slide captures in summary format what we'll be doing. So this is when our administrators who have speaking parts should probably start to maybe come up. So we'll begin with a request for two special ed teachers. This isn't completely new to the board. You've heard about this. But Dr. Boyd will speak very briefly about it. And then we'll move on to a couple of the other recommendations. So this year, we're starting with the recommendations, and then we'll backwards map from there. And talk about some of the data that are driving that.
Good evening, everyone. So the data really is coming from, as you know, over the last few years, we've talked a great deal about our early intervention programs. And we've seen larger populations coming to us primarily when we talk about this population. And what we're looking for or looking at is their needs. And there's been greater, a greater number of students requiring autistic support programming at a district-level classroom program. So that's what this information is telling you here. We have about 45 students coming to us this year through early intervention. Approximately 17 of those students will require a district program classroom. Those numbers have increased over the years. So again, as we're moving them through the elementary level, we now have a group of students that will move to the middle level. We have one autistic support teacher at Middle School East currently with a caseload of, I believe it's, eight students. The fifth graders transitioning to sixth grade can't go into that caseload because it goes over the state limit. So that's driving out a need for an autistic support teacher at the middle level. But with these numbers coming in, there's 17 coming in, there's only five shifting out, or shifting up to the next level. So that's driving the need for another special education teacher at that primary grade. Now, you're going to see here, you might think, wait, we have our K-1, 2 typically at Skipback, and our 3, 4, 5 at South. That's how we've operated, I guess, since the pandemic. South used to house all of the elementary autistic support, and then we split it out because we did not have enough classrooms to support K-5. What you see on the slide here is the recommendation for South and Middle School East. What we're looking at, as we look at that breakdown of student population, K-5 at the elementary level, and their home schools, we're also hearing from families who are very much interested in, is it possible to keep our children in the home school to the greatest extent possible? What we're looking to also do in this, as these children come in, is establish a K-5 AS programming at Skipback and South. I think we get into a slide later that'll map that out a little bit. But most likely, at South next year, there won't be any third graders attending South for autistic support. But by adding one teacher, again, this also plays into full-day K and the needed classrooms that we need for the full-day K classrooms. We don't have enough classrooms to just have AS programming at just one building or the other. So we're trying to meet our families where they are, meet the needs of our students, and make the best possible recommendations for staffing. So that's the call-out for the special ed teachers. With that being said, when we establish district-wide program classes, with that is often a paraprofessional that needs to support those special education classrooms. So there's two for special education. With the implementation of full-day K, we're basically looking to double our kindergarten classrooms. And we do currently have paraprofessional support for our kindergarten programs, but we are looking to add a paraprofessional for each elementary school to support the full-day K programming. And then the enrollment at Skipback is larger than in some of the other buildings, and it's driving out the need for cafeteria support in the lunchroom at Skipback Elementary. So that encompasses the seven support staff that are being asked for here.
Good evening. And for the high school, we're requesting the addition of a dean of student success. This person would actually be helping our students that typically have struggled. They would help students that are transitioning to the high school that might have some struggles, students that might be coming from out-of-school placements, or L students. And they'd also be helping create success plans for our students so they can make sure that we get them to where they need to go once they graduate. This person would also help with restorative practices in the building. So when there are conflicts with students, they would help resolve those conflicts, and they would also help with some of our low-level discipline.
I'm very fortunate to be able to talk to you about one of my favorite things about elementary school, and that is kindergarten. Because if you are having a bad day, if you go into kindergarten, there's no way that you will continue that bad day because it's magical there. And we have been working to, very much, on our full-day kindergarten program and what it's going to look like for next year. Our enrollment began on January 9th, and we're asking that families complete enrollment by February 23rd so that we can determine about how many students we are going to be having for next year in full-day kindergarten. We've been working off of a number that is 10 percent and 20 percent of an increase off of what we have right now. And the reason we need to know that number of how many students we're going to be having is so that we can determine how many teachers we're going to be needing for next year for full day and how many classrooms. All of those things also determine how much furniture and how many, the resources that we need to go into all of those classrooms. We're also working on transition activities that we're going to be able to include and have our new kindergarten students and their families to give them the opportunity to interact with us before they become our students next year.
As Mrs. Benz has said, we're very excited, all four principals, as well as all of the kindergarten teachers, to be moving into a full-day kindergarten. But of course, everything comes with a cost. So the monies that you see up there are preliminary estimates, and they were determined really last year and the beginning of this year during just sort of our initial planning conversations. But we have been working, the administrative team, in collaboration with the kindergarten teachers to determine the specifics on resources and furniture. It's really important that we have that collaboration with those that are actually going to be doing it every day. To aid in this planning and collaboration, we'll be visiting some local schools, some of our neighboring school districts such as North Penn, to see their full-day classrooms and really be inspired by what we see. The visits will provide the team with additional information and spark ideas about what is necessary to build robust and interactive classroom environments. And we're hoping, after those visits and some other meetings and collaborations we have with the kindergarten team, as well as the rest of the administrative team, that we'll be able to come to you with a more clearly articulated recommended budget.
Good evening. It's my pleasure to come talk to you about the middle level. It's a very dramatic period of growth at a developmental stage, both academically, socially, and emotionally. We've recognized from our data that we have to make some adjustments in our schedule. Some of the needs that we've identified is our PBIS program, where we're working on our social-emotional learning. As we move to advanced tiers, we're going to need to be able to include a check-in and checkout time. So we'd really like to have more time in homerooms, building those relationships with teachers that are in the homeroom. We're also recognizing we've got a lot happening, period 10, advisory period, at the end of the day. It causes us to make choices that we don't want to make. We don't want gifted students to have to choose between time that they're going to be spending with a class, either between a gifted class or another core area class. We also want to be able to make sure that we can have focused time on intervention and enrichment. And we feel that the only way to do that is to really carve out time in our schedule. In particular, we want to be able to have intervention time for small groups, for students that have identified gaps in their learning, but also for, as our tier one, for all of our students to be able to help them thrive academically and be able to have that time every single day, as well as our PBIS. Data is telling us that we need to spend more time in order to have more consistent conversations around social-emotional learning. It's a very dramatic and critical learning point in child development, and we feel that that's really important. And in able to do that, we really have a different framework. And Mr. Creedon is going to share about that next.
Thanks, Dr. Kloon. I'll just emphasize a couple of things Dr. Kloon stated in this schedule that we're looking at. We underwent a significant analysis of schedules around the area. We, I can remember speaking to about a handful of schools, seeing what they have. And what we learned was that everybody has something different. There's nothing, there isn't one, you know, right answer when it comes to a lot of this. What we want to do is kind of learn from a lot of the experiences we've had over the past couple of years. And a couple of things we've learned is that intervention isn't one thing for all. It is meeting individual kids' needs where they're at. And this schedule provides us that opportunity. What is a good thing about a middle school schedule is that there's so many good things happening and packed into the school day that are beneficial to the kids. The hard thing is, how do you even find any time for intervention in a middle school schedule that is going to be focused? And that, what we've also learned over the past year or so is that we don't want to take time away that students also can benefit from, and that can create a stigma. And we don't want to create that stigma amongst middle school students. Once middle school students start realizing that you're doing things to group them here and group them there, it can deflate and discourage. And we don't want that either. This time in the day, we found that we could find, provide a niche in the day where it could be a time that is very purposeful, it is very engaging, and it is something that can be effective for all kids, and all at different tiers. So they're going to participate in, most of the, a big percentage of the students, 80 percent or so, will participate in core rotations. They're actually going to have time to go around and see their, go around in class, in their classes, and see their teachers again throughout a cycle. The other component is, there are going to be students, based on data, all the testing that we end up doing with diagnostic and benchmark testing, they can be pulled out according to the data that we have. And we get to target specific needs and specific things that we want to strengthen within their math and ELA understanding. And do that in small groups, and not something extremely large or that can become somewhat, it's creeping up on me here, somewhat of a discouragement if it's something in too large of a group and can become distracting. And then lastly, we have a social-emotional learning component that we think is necessary when it comes to middle school students. And we are going to be looking into a couple of curriculums that we think are extremely effective at this age in character counts and second step. Those are two curriculums that we've, in talking with administrators, I know we had the Montgomery County principals in a meeting that we have regularly, Dr. Kloon and I, and second step and character counts were two that were highly acclaimed and are very successful in other districts. And we're going to, looking at piloting them here in the coming months so that we can do a, do it right when it comes to really doing what we can to see how our teachers and how our kids get the feedback, the effective feedback from them when we go through that piloting process. So this, we're looking at fitting a lot of this in outside of that advisory because advisory, when it comes to teachers and the support that they get during advisory and the skills they're learning during that advisory, especially executive learning, executive functioning skills during that time, we want to keep it out of that advisory time so it's not competing with that. And we've learned this year that there is a lot we can do at those times. And then the last thing, I know I have to try to keep this succinct, but one more thing is, if we're able to have that intervention and enrichment, which is I and E, time outside of that 10th period and do it at different times of the day for different grade levels, what we also do is maximize the support personnel we have. And they're able to put all of their energy into each grade level each time we're able to meet during these times throughout the day. And they don't have, we don't have to have it at one time during the day, and then they have to choose whether they're going to go to this grade level, that grade level, or that grade level. They get to put all of their efforts into one grade level at a time throughout the day. So all those things being said are reasons why we think this schedule will be extremely effective for all levels, all kids, and adding a lot of those supports that we think are necessary at the middle level.
Good evening. We continue to focus on math instruction, programming, and pathways as part of our comprehensive plan. As you recall, last year, we adopted a new math resource at the middle school level, and we are implementing that for the first time this year. We are now continuing with revising our curriculum at the K-5 level to ensure coherence among levels. So we don't want to just focus on the middle level, but we want to also think about our elementary and high school and how they feed into each other and how we are supporting our students with an equal understanding of conceptual understanding, procedural fluency, and application. And so ultimately, we're seeking to position our students as thinkers in the classroom. And so that's very exciting. And so I'm hoping that this spring, we have a recommendation for a new resource, both at the K-5 level and at the ninth grade level, as well as curriculum documents with the understanding by design, curriculum design. At the ninth grade level, we are working collaboratively to create curriculum and identify resources for our new freshman advisory class, which is targeting students who have historically underperformed entering into their freshman year. We're very excited as this class, in addition to their core content, as a way to target their success and to help close gaps that we typically see during that freshman year. Throughout this selection process and throughout curriculum writing, we are also looking to continue to provide teachers with professional development around content and pedagogical knowledge and best practices in teaching and learning, and partner with parents in helping them understand any new resources that we would recommend. Thank you.
Good evening. Data. So, as you know, we all have measurement tools at the state level, right? Our high-stakes testings and our keystones, PSSA, so forth. So internally, we develop an assessment schedule that outlines what we're doing and when we're doing it. So there are teachers and our administrators can work together to do our data collection rounds. So in order to respond and support our students as individual learners, we need to know more about them. So not only do we do this in the classroom setting as far as formative and summative assessments, but we do it more formally three times a year with our benchmarks and our diagnostic assessments. So our benchmarking is kind of what we call our end-of-course assessment. Our diagnostic actually gives us those individual intricate details about students, what skill levels and so forth, and that allows us to really hone in and provide those more individualized supports for our students. So when we talk about tiers and so forth, as you're going to hear throughout the evening, that allows us not only that large group, but that small group opportunity to work with our students and really kind of get down to the nuts and bolts and translate that data into our classrooms. So the frames that you're seeing here, okay, over these two slides across the grade levels, both elementary, middle, and high school. both elementary, middle, and high school, is that framework of those assessments so that we can then respond to the data formally, working with our facilitators, working with our administrators and our teachers in smaller data meetings, and interpreting that data after our analyzation and turn that into what classroom practice looks like. So the combination of that information is so very important for us to make things happen for our students and watch that student growth occur.
Good evening, everybody. Mrs. Nassau and I will talk to you a little bit about our English Language Arts data. I asked Dr. Russell to include this slide, this visual. It provides a nice breakdown of the skills that go into becoming a skilled reader, and it's not a simple process. You can see the skills are sort of broken down into two categories, word recognition and language comprehension. So we want to make sure at the elementary level that we're really capturing all of these skills, and these skills are developed really as soon as students walk in the door in kindergarten. There's a heavy focus on word recognition, especially in K-1 and 2, those early years, but we're also building those language comprehension skills as students move up, and by the time they leave as elementary students and head off to secondary, we want to make sure they're skilled readers, which is really the fluent execution and coordination of those word recognition and language comprehension skills. So one of the important measures that we use, especially in K-1 and 2, is a measure known as the DIBELS assessment. So this stands for, you can see, the Dynamic Indicators of Basic Early Literacy Skills. And this really helps us capture, especially in K-1 and 2, again, those word recognition skills are so important for students to become skilled readers. If they don't master those phonological skills and their, the phonics and the decoding skills, it's less likely that they will develop into skilled readers where we can focus more on the language comprehension in the later years. So what you're seeing is the progression of these early literacy skills in K through 2, and a little bit in third grade there. Ideally, we want to get to around 80%, where our students are meeting core by the end of the year. Naturally, and research shows that about 20% of students will struggle learning these skills, and they need intervention beyond what's in the core curriculum to become successful readers. So that may take time. Some students develop a little bit slower than others. They need more time to become skilled readers, but there are other measures we use. This one, again, in K-1 and 2, is just really critical for us to make sure that we are catching those students that are struggling with those basic early literacy skills, and then we can drill down with further diagnostics to really pinpoint those specific skills they need to develop.
Thank you. Good evening. So we're just going to shift from the DIBELS that K through 2 lends to our ELA PSSAs. As you know, that this is part of the Pennsylvania System of School Assessments, which we administer in the spring of every school year, except you will see instead of 2019, 2020 due to the COVID shutdown. But you will see here the proficiency in advanced chart that we have of Perkiuman Valley School District, grade 3 through grade 8, and you will see our students, the percentage of how many students were proficient in advanced. The PSSAs is a criterion reference test, and it assesses our students on the standards of that particular grade level. So if you take a look at this next slide, also for English Language Arts PSSAs, we have all the grades, grades 3 through 8. That is when the PSSA are administered, and we have Perkiuman Valley School District bar graph on the far left, and as you progress to the right, you will see that the PVSD students we are achieving as well or better in ELA in comparison to the schools in Montgomery County as well as in the state of Pennsylvania. I'll turn it over to Mr. DeAndrea.
So on this slide, you're looking at some of our PVAS data. So what PVAS does is it measures our students as cohorts and measures their success in the PSSAs from one year to the next. So while they're taking different tests, PVAS helps measure through a formula the growth that they've made or haven't made from one year to the next. So we use this data to identify really groups of students, cohorts of students, students in performance bands, where they're successful, where they might be struggling, and then we use that information to implement different interventions they might need or programming that they might need for our students that are high performers, what more do they need? So it really gives us a broad view of the different performance levels of our students.
The math PSSA assesses our students in grades 3 through 8 on various problems and skills within our four assessment anchors of numbers and operations, algebraic concepts, geometry, and data analysis, and probability. As you can see presented on the slide, the percentage of our students scoring proficient or advanced is maintained or has increased since the 2021 school year. However, we do see a general decline as we get increase in our grade levels, and this is not something that is unique to Perkiuman Valley, but this is something that happens across our state and then also across the country. As students enter into middle school and enter into more ratio and proportional thinking and towards Algebra I, we generally see that decline. On the next slide, you'll see the comparison groups of our county and state and the 10% to 20%. In comparison, our students are achieving slightly lower than the comparable groups but performing higher than our county and the state. Mr. DeAndrea just explained the PVAS data, so I won't go into that. I do love this quote, though, "Achievement is about location; growth is about direction." Right? And so we look to this to indicate to us what is our growth. We've had varied growth. If you look at the 2023 section of the data down below, you can see that each grade level is varied in whether we grew in the last year. However, across the grade levels, there's moderate evidence that PV exceeded the growth standard for the state. Then we move into our science PSSA data, and this includes eligible content items aligned to standards for science, technology, environment, and ecology. And these standards will be transitioning with the STEEL standards coming up in the 2025, 2026 school year, so we will see a shift in that. As you can see from the graph indicated, both our students in the fourth grade and the eighth grade, those are the only two grades that are tested, made improvements in the percentages of students proficient and advanced during our last school year, and both grades exceeded the pre-pandemic percentages. When comparing across groups, our performance is consistent with the similar schools, and we are outperforming our county and state counterparts. Additionally, with our growth indicators with PVAS, again, we are well above or above our indicators of where we need to be. So we are seeing great strides in our science education.
So Keystone data tells you, this shows you a little bit about what happens with our students taking keystones. Students will take keystones as an end-of-course assessment. It serves two purposes. Obviously, it shows how students perform as an end-of-course assessment, but it also goes towards graduation requirements and graduation pathways for students. The specific data at this point that I'd like to point out is where we are in the last two years, which would be the 21, 22 year and the 22, 23 year. In the literature, we scored at a 75% proficiency in advanced and then an 84% in the last year, which means we're moving upward once again. With Algebra, the middle school data indicates 92% and then 81%. At the high school level, 31% and 49%, which is an interesting piece, but it does communicate the fact that some of our higher mathematics students do take those keystones in eighth grade when they're at the middle level. Biology, 69% and 70% in the last two years, and this is just showing you where we were in the last few years. PVAS data, as Mr. DeAndrea communicated previously, projects growth that students should be making. What's really great, this is a really wonderful slide for us to see where we are trending. And in 21, 2021, we were above, but in 22 and 23 in Algebra, we are well above, and that little, little kind of extra parentheses at the end means we're off, we're off the map, which means we're really doing a great job of meeting growth for our students, specifically in Algebra. Same thing in biology, you can see that we're above, then well above, then continued to be well above in the last three years. Literature is an even more interesting story because you can see we were below. Literacy, I would say, sometime during COVID year was, really took a hit, but in the last year, we've done a lot of interventions to find we're going well above growth for students, which is really encouraging. And then this is Keystone Achievement Comparison Data. By the end of 11th grade, this will show how our students scored proficient or advanced by the end of their eighth grade of all of the keystones that they've taken. The last two years, you can see, are interesting information, 70% and 69% for Perkiuman Valley for proficiency on all of the keystones taken. You can see that that's a trend downwards, but that's not just for us, but that's across all of those, of those different graphs, including the county and the state. I would attribute that to the fact that we've, the state has recently introduced a graduation pathways where students don't necessarily have to reach proficiency on the keystones to hit those graduation pathways so they can do other things, which I would say has some, some level of why students don't get to that point, not necessarily their abilities by the time they're at the end of their 11th grade year. Thank you.
I just want to go back to this slide and clarify because it was a really good question about why are there some differences in the Keystone, the percentage of students demonstrating proficiency or advanced performance on keystones. This graph shows you all students that tested in spring 2023, and the percentage of those students that hit proficient or advanced performance. This slide shows you all testers by 11th grade, their best score, so you'll see some slight differences in the overall achievement in cases related to the keystones. Okay, civics exam is mine. This is another required exam of our eighth grade students. They take a civics exam. The state introduced this several years ago. We have the opportunity to create the exam and then administer it. The state approves it, reviews it, and what you see here are the percentages of our students who were able to demonstrate 80% or above or fall within that 60 to 79% band, which is considered proficient.
Academics are awesome, but we all know that getting students involved in school will help kids be more successful in school. So this slide actually shows you our rates of students participating in athletics, clubs, and in music programs, and you'll see those numbers are pretty impressive. Each year, we actually, middle schools and the high school actually increase the number of clubs we have available to students, and that's based on student requests. Students come to us and say, hey, we want to start, let's say, the esports club, and then we look into it and do it, or this year we have requests to start a fishing club and other clubs. So we look to work with our students to increase the offerings for them to get them more involved in school. Now we'll get back to some academics. We offer many courses here that are AP classes. The orange on this slide are PVs, average scores on the AP exams. In almost every case, except I think five on the slide, we outperform the nation on APs. In two of the five that we don't outperform the nation, we don't even offer those AP classes here at the high school. So our kids are doing pretty well on those exams without even having those classes. So I venture to say that our kids do a really great job on the APs, and we actually made the AP honor roll this year. I forgot to add that to the presentation, but we made the AP honor roll, which shows that we're actually involving more students in AP and doing a good job. Our students that go to the tech school take a series of tests as they end their career at the tech school to see how they're doing in their different career areas. We have two slides here. This first one is, shows you how many students in each of the areas and how they did on the NOCT. I think there are a total of 46 students that are seniors that took the NOCT last year, and all but six of them demonstrated proficiency in their areas, which is awesome. You can see the different areas. Diesel Truck Technology, there were three students that were not proficient, but there were three that were. Another way to represent the same data, this is by percentages, so really it should look the same as the other slide, but our kids do a really great job on the NOCT exams. Every year in October, we administer the PSATs here. We have about 450 students that take those exams. They are about three hours, and they are tested in English and in math, and think back to SATs, they're very similar to that, but they also sign our students up for the National Merit Program, which is a scholarship program that the students score at a certain level. They can actually become part of the program and become National Merit finalists. So our scores, they've been about the same, you know, a little down. I don't know if it's statistically significant, but you can see what they are there. And SATs, once again, our bars are orange. SATs are three hours, and we outperform the nation in every year. We do, we do a very nice job on the SATs. Our students take them at their schools and then the scores are attributed to us. ACTs are another metric. They are more of a curriculum-based exam that colleges use for acceptance, and once again, PV in the orange, we outperform the state and the nation. This is a slide I'm really proud of. A couple of years back, we had a discussion, why was our graduation rate at 94.4? We really weren't sure about that, but we've been really working really hard to make sure that we're trying to meet the needs, hence the request for the end of student success so that our students can graduate and graduate on time. There are always some students who, special education students who might stay for a fifth year or even a sixth year, but this number really, I think, represents the fact that we are really working hard to get our students to graduate within four years or five years of being in school. I think that's actually a four-year, we should change that, it's a four-year rate. So what it is, what the state does, they actually have a cohort. They say the number of students that start freshman year that are here senior year, and they base it on that. They don't count the kids that move in and out. So this is over five years, but it's from the four-year cohort program. Yep. And every year, we actually survey all of our seniors to see what they're doing after high school. I always say, talk about it in my speech at graduation, and this is the data that they self-reported to us last spring, last spring, and 78.1 are going to a four-year college. Two-year college, I'm going to combine that with the community colleges, is about 11%. About 5% went right to the workforce. We had a bigger percentage for gap year than ever before, and then 1.5 is other. There's always some students who might not quite tell us or they don't report that data to us, so we categorize that for other. And we get lots of recognitions as a district. School Digger, as you can see, recognizes us as a district, we're doing well. We're 36th in the state out of 606 districts. The district is 31st out of 496 in Niche Ratings, and the high school is ranked 45th out of all the high schools in Pennsylvania and is 1,317 in national rankings. We consistently rank in those top scores for that.
So as we move into action steps, what we're really looking at are some of the things that we do, the systems that we have in place and the approaches that we take to support our students. This is a reference slide for you. What do we actually do with these data on a regular basis? So just a snapshot of what teachers do, what building administrators do, and what district administrators might do. And our comprehensive plan, goal areas, continue to be a focus or place a focus on math proficiency, English language proficiency, so focusing on those students whose primary language is one other than English and supporting them in our school setting with achievement. Our special education students and their proficiency continues to be a focus, as does student wellness. There was a question about, well, what was recommended last year and how are we doing in response to those recommendations being met? And there were several positions that were requested last year. Transition Coordinator was one, and ESL staff was another, and it's early for us to tell. However, we feel good about the enhancements to the services we are providing our special education students when it comes to transitioning from high school. And there are two overarching goals as we prepare our special education students to transition. One is sustainable employment, and two is independent living, and the board has supported us in providing and affording enhanced experiences to our students through some of these resources. So the Transition Coordinator works closely with families and students on what comes next for them when it comes to employment. That FCS area room, which we should take a walk down at some point and look at, will also afford our also afford our students the experience of an independent living quarters or or place, it's like an apartment. In addition to supporting our transition services for our special education students last year, it's a little bit early to tell how that will impact the data specifically yet, just implemented in the fall this year. We also have the ESL program specialists or teachers that support English language learners. So we've expanded that department, and if you look at the comprehensive slide deck, the number of students qualifying for English language services continues to increase, and we're not alone in that regard. It's it's a a pattern that we're seeing. I see Mrs. Sadler nodding her head across Montgomery County and the Commonwealth. In addition, we had, you heard Mrs. O'Sullivan mention the middle school math resources. They were also a recommendation last year that was presented to the board in our efforts to update our curricula and update the practices and the resources that support best practices in the classroom aligned to the curricula, as well as collapsing that academic track at the high school and affording more students more rigor with the appropriate supports through their high school experience. Now, as we move into this year, we'll talk a little bit more about some specific steps and systems that we have in place, and we'll start with MTSS. You hear us refer to MTSS a lot. Dr. Sacks will talk a little bit about some of the intricacies of that framework.
All right, multi-tiered systems of support. It's exactly what it's saying to you when we you'll hear us refer to the tiered systems. And we talk about 18, 80, 15, and five. We like to look at it as all some few. Our goal is to intensify supports and resources for students, no matter where they are on the continuum of learning. So that is what we're working to do is create a frame that encompasses the whole child. So we talk about academics. I think you, you know, heard Dr. Moss talk about that component of it's not just academics with our students, right? We're a school, our students are multifaceted, right? And we want them to grow well-rounded. So we talk about our academics, we talk about behavioral components, right? Guiding our students as they grow, as well as the social emotional, which you can see falls under wellness. So that school-wide approach in embracing our students and meeting them exactly where they are, where their needs are telling us through the data systems that we provide, the information that we gather, and then interpreting that to support them. So as we build and strengthen this framework, you're going to see and hear how we're developing those within our schools. So you can see now that we have established a district-wide team with representation of our principals, with our teacher representatives and our facilitators to really hone in on what that district-level data looks like, breaking that down, really analyzing our building level and getting that interpretation in the classroom. So you can see what we have done throughout. We've really tried to incorporate, you know, already, we've talked about math resources. We kicked off, we had a lot of conversations about math in the beginning, started putting resources in place. We're looking very carefully at the modeling, child study team working together, getting down to that intricate individualized level, not just the smaller cohorts of of students need, but really breaking that down deeper. And again, bringing on our math coach and getting those practices honed in the classroom setting. So when you hear multi-tiered systems of support, if you think about this triangle approach, you know, our larger group and then intensifying resources along that continuum, no matter whether it's on the enrichment side or the support side in a different way.
So in talking about PAYS, it is a great way at identifying strengths and needs. We had completed the PAYS in grade six, eight, 10, 12, October 24th. It is currently in the preliminary data phase. It takes a while for us to get the whole package. It's over 100 pages long, but it's really good information, and it goes into mental health, substance abuse, school climate and safety, life stressors. And what it does is it gives us student perception. It helps us identify risk factors, protective factors, and also needs so that we can then take that, learn from it, and find how we can bridge the gaps and find solutions. So going into student wellness, it fits right in with the MTSS framework. And so when you look at tier one, it is for all students receiving supports. So that is your positive behavior interventions and supports. That is the school climate, restorative practices. It's about resolving conflict, repairing relationships. Social emotional learning is very much about understanding self-awareness, social awareness, relationship skills, all those needed things that we need to be an adult. They really do help, and they're at the tier one level. Tier two, it's for some students, and it's a more intense support. So you have your student assistance program, your SAP liaison, and what they do is they help to provide assessments and connect students to supports. There are also counseling groups within this. And then tier three, it is even a more intense support, and that is for short-term counseling. It's for outpatient services within the schools, and it is also where we contract our mental health professionals. And so I do not want to forget also our school counselors, our social workers, and our nurses, because they very much help with providing mental health and wellness. And so where all of this is going, it's really identifying next steps and what we're doing really well, and then also identifying where we can grow to better help support our students.
And so this snapshot is really just some of our special education services over time. I will have the pleasure of coming back to the board next month to talk about our special education plan. Every three years, each school district is required to submit a special education plan to PDE, and we're up for that this year. It needs to be submitted to PDE by May 1st. So before we can do that, we have to backwards map that, present it to the board, share with you a draft, and then it needs to go out for public review for 28 days. So next month, I'll be sharing more detail about special education services. But what this graph shows is our percentage of students receiving special education services over time. And you can see for a period of years, we had a steady increase, then we had a slight dip down, and now we're on an increase again. We're at 16.2% of our student population. Also, keep in mind that our enrollment in the district is going down. So for 2223 school year, just to give perspective, that 16.2% was 816 students. The year prior, in 2122, the 16% represented 820 students. Okay, so a slight increase in the percentage of students in receiving special education services, a decline in our overall enrollment. All right, and that number will share what our information was as of December 1st. So those numbers come from what we call a December 1 count, and each year, that's the date that across the Commonwealth selects and says, how many students are in special education as of December 1? So that number fluctuates throughout a school year, but that's the the count. It goes off of, it's called a December 1 count. So in the special education plan, what we what we look at, they share with us state data and then LEA or district-level data. And we need to do some comparisons. We look at what it's telling us, we make recommendations, we look at what we're anticipating our program changes to be. So for example, we look at the early intervention numbers, we look at the number of students graduating, and we have to make adjustments in our programming needs. And then we also take a look at the ongoing programs. We look at our students' individual IEPs on an individual level. We take state plan, we look at individuals, and then we are working very closely with the curriculum and instruction team and the MTSS team to look at those services beyond just our students in special education with their IEPs. And again, as Dr. Russell mentioned earlier, with the transition coordinator, we also want to focus on our students as they graduate and what happens to them post-secondary.
Good evening, everyone. As referenced previously, we have a growing number of English learners within our school district by state mandate. Those English learners are required to take the WIDA access assessment every year. It is currently being administered now in each of the buildings. What you see represented on this slide is the language proficiency continuum. So language proficiency is measured on a continuum of one to six. A student who is a 1.0 is considered entering. Those are commonly referred to as newcomers, students who have just arrived here, who have little to no English skills, all the way up to a six, and that would be a student who would be considered proficient in their English language skills. So every year, our students are required to take the access test, and that measures their proficiency in the four domains of language, which are reading, writing, listening, and speaking. On this slide, you will see cohort data over a two-year period of time. So the lighter purple shade would be from the 2122 school year and the darker purple shade from the 2223 school year. And what we hope to see with each of those cohorts, which represents the same children, is growth in their language proficiency. What you see on the bottom of the bar are the N counts. So the two instances where we don't see growth in the cohort, you can see that the numbers reflected in those two instances were one student or two students. But overall, you do see evidence of growth in the cohorts, and that is something that we are always looking for as it relates to language proficiency. So next steps for our English language development department, we are currently in the midst of action planning. The team this year consists of five ESL program specialists, as well as myself, and we are looking at several documents to guide our action planning. One of those documents is the ESL audit that was conducted by the Montgomery County Intermediate Unit in the spring of 2023. We are also referencing our district's Equity Action Plan, as well as the Comprehensive Plan. So all of those documents are guiding us in the development of an action plan, which we will have completed prior to the end of the school year. Our ESL specialists are also engaged in ongoing professional learning, but one of the things that they are going to be attending this year is structured literacy training, and that is a mandate for all of our schools in Pennsylvania. But this specific training is going to be tailored to supporting the needs of ESL program specialists. We know that the state requires a specialized set of skills when you're working with English language learners, so they're very excited to be attending a specific training just for them, and that is coming up in March. And then the last component of the slide talks about the Language Instruction Educational Program, or LIEP. We are required to have a thoughtful, deliberate, and intentional plan for the education and instruction of our English learners. We are in the process of refining the document that was started in the spring and then publishing it to all relevant stakeholders. But essentially, that program manual that we are developing will outline the ways in which we are supporting our English language learners here in our district. Thank you.
So this last section then culminates with just some overarching teaching and learning activities and the leadership on the part of this team. What you just saw in terms of action steps, that focus on MTSS, the framework that helps guide in each building from a district level to the building level, a review of the data and the considerations for the most appropriate responses. Then we talked a little bit about student wellness. We continue to see more students who emerge with mental health needs or a focus on health is necessary, and those resources that Ms. Streisbach pointed out are ones that support. You also then saw some information about our special education services, again, connected to those comprehensive planning goals, as well as ELL or ESL staff and programming for ELL students. So overall, we continue to work from the curriculum and instruction team on professional learning. Our three-year plan concludes this year, so we're in the process of looking at these data and considering what are the needs of our students that in turn drive the needs of our staff, so that we target what it is they need or should be enhanced with most effectively. So we're looking at a new three-year plan, and we'll be working on that. We still focus on coaching, so colleagues supporting colleagues with feedback. And as well as that, we have teacher supervision from our administrators at the building level, as well as from district office to the buildings in support of teacher practice. Additionally, we continue to focus on practices. What are best practices today? We've talked a little bit about that coming into tonight. Standing and delivering at students, a one-size-fits-all, whole-group instruction, as we call it, is not considered best practice and does not often leave all students learning. Some, yes, not all. So we think about a universal design for learning that guides us to figuring out or thinking about how do all students learn, and what are some of the different ways we can engage our students that involve hands-on, auditory skills, visual skills, listening as well. So different ways that we incorporate what we do with our students, the resources that we have, and how we engage them in the learning continues to be a focus, and we are updating curricula. So you heard about elementary math. Elementary math curriculum is being updated. We have a cycle. I believe we have, help me out, Mrs. O'Sullivan, science and social studies. We have the STEEL standards coming our way. They must be implemented 25, 26? Thank you. So some different subject areas, but again, our curricula are on a cycle, and so we touch them based on that cycle. The STEEL standards, you'll hear more about those. They're coming down to us. So that will be an update to the Pennsylvania Academic Science Standards, Science and Technology Standards, which have been in place since 2002. So it is a timely update, and they're they're titled STEEL standards. So more conversation coming, but in sort of an overall approach, some of the things that are happening in the realms of teaching and learning from the curriculum department and building leadership. And with that, we'll invite you to pose questions or share feedback, clarifications.
Thank you, Dr. Russell, so much. I'll open the floor to questions. I have a couple, but I'll open the floor to whoever would like to to kick it off, if anybody has any questions. Okay, so I guess the first ask that I have, I kind of go in reverse order. This FCS room, I know that we had talked a lot about its development, you know, really for some time. Since we're in a unique forum right now where we're all here, as well as your special education department, really, the whole department's here, I was wondering after if anybody would be interested and it would be possible for us to take a peek at it tonight. I don't know if that's something that you want to save for another day, but I figured if we're all here, it might, it's not really far away, so.
It's not. And is Mrs. Aducci here?
I don't want to put anybody on the spot about it. We can, I know.
I mean, as far as I'm concerned, it's okay, but I'll double-check with Mrs. Aducci.
Okay. We can say for a ribbon, we can hold off on a ribbon cutting or something if you want to unveil, but it's. Okay, all right. So then I won't steal any any thunder, but it's been highly anticipated. We're very, very excited for all of you. Oh, well, we need to wait for that. Okay, so we'll wait. So we'll stick a pin in that, but we'll put it, we'll work together to work on a schedule. And Mrs. Mayer, I don't know if you'd like to join us when we do that. We can communicate. It's just there was such anticipation to bringing the the room to to fruition that I really would like to have us all really appreciate it and have whatever you have set up showcased, so.
So when when, thank you, Mrs. Aducci. And when the group is really ready to showcase it, it does look good now, but I know that there are some things around, it's not just right. Maybe we could schedule a board meeting, you know, even 15, 20 minutes before we start to walk down there. And we would love to showcase it to our board. We feel really good about the space for our students and are appreciative of the resources that were afforded administration.
And so much of the work actually was done by the district and hands. A lot of people had hands in it, so I just wanted to point that out and say thank you. And it was sort of a spur of the moment as we were. Yep, so that was my first item. My next was, hopefully, we could do a little bit more of a deep dive into the middle school schedule and the changes around that, because what I didn't see, which was just hard to visualize and, you know, mapping it out in my mind, was how the how 90 minutes were found for these three time blocks, because there was no real overlay of the current schedule. So I have personal familiarity just based on my student and their experience with advisory and the interventions that have been playing out the last several years. And so I just had some questions around basically where the 90 minutes are found, and then also around the potential autonomy for individual students within these INE periods, because I think the thing that has been feedback-wise presented to me is that, you know, sometimes not everybody needs an intervention. So so in those instances, I did see, you know, the notes about additional, you know, gifted rotations, but it seems like this is 90 minutes daily carved out. So that's where I'm kind of just looking for some more clarification. So, that's where I'm kind of just looking for some more clarification there.
Sure. Good questions. So, what it really is, is 30 minutes per grade level. It's not 90 minutes total. So, what you'll see, we didn't put grade levels up there, because depending on needs of kids, sometimes the order changes, so we didn't want to just commit to that. So, if you were to go off of that, you know, at West, what it would be for West this year is we have our eighth graders eating first, or seventh grade second, and their sixth grade last.
It marries with the lunch period.
And it marries with the lunch, correct.
Okay.
So, it's only 30 minutes each.
Daily.
Yes, daily.
Okay. That makes a lot more sense, because I was trying to figure out, like, how in the world are we finding all this extra time in the day and still ending at 2:30?
So, what we've also created within it, so, and I was kind of being very succinct with this, but what I, what I want to share is, what we're establishing is a core rotation with their classes and each of their teachers on their team throughout a cycle. And that's going to be most of the kids. And in that time, teachers are going to have the students in front of them that they're most familiar with, that they have the rapport with, the relationships with, and they're going to be more, they can be more specific with the data that they're getting back from, whether it be the diagnostic benchmark data that they're taking throughout the year, or the classroom data, and say, hey, I have some more time with you. We're going to start, you know, dig a little deeper into this, or we're going to get to something that I think we can expand upon, and really take advantage of that time with some additional class time with that. At the same time, there's also those intervention groups going on that are going to be more smaller in nature, and more focused, and really honing in on some of the specific math or ELA needs for each of those students in that area.
So, for the folks listening, you know, at home, I think, I just feel like this may be because this is really the first time we're all talking about this in public. There may be a lot of questions, you know, day two, from parents and things like that, especially parents, well, parents of kids that are going into sixth grade don't really know a different schedule than this one, so, but really moving within. Is there going to be, and this may be something that is going to be developed, and it may grow into it, will there then be an opportunity with the additional class time with their core team to have the ability to maybe do like a culmination project? Like, something that builds on, like, for example, the gifted program has a project that they work on, you know, over time throughout the semester, or, you know, six months of the year, the other six months of the year? And that would allow them some of that time with their teachers that they, that is additional, like you said, to the actual curriculum core instruction.
So, one of the advantages we saw with this new schedule is that particularly for the gifted students, we're not going to have them have to choose between a core class and then go into their gifted class, but instead, they're going to be able to meet with their gifted teacher during that intervention time, in addition to potentially an advisory time. We've had conversations with our gifted teachers about using that time as a consulting time during 10th period, and also having their actual scheduled time during two INE periods out of the six-day cycle, and actually splitting the groups in half. So, two, we have about 20 or so gifted students per grade level, per building. So, when you split them into two groups, you're looking at groups of about 10, which gives them a lot of opportunity, not only to continue with some of, I think, some really fantastic programming that we currently have, projects that the students do, but also build in time for doing just that, being able to do individualized, genius, you know, projects or ideas, opportunities for students to delve into areas that they're most interested in. We see this framework as being really, really effective, and Mr. Creedon and I have spent time talking to other principals around the county, and definitely, this is the direction that they've all gone in, so we really want to be able to catch up and really be giving this opportunity for our students as well.
Right. And I appreciate the idea behind that, for sure, because I think a lot of times, especially for students that have pull-out-for-music lessons, or more than one music group, when they do need specific time to catch up on something or ask a question, sometimes it is a little hard to juggle, because there just isn't a lot of time in the day. So, with regards to the intervention piece of it, I appreciate that there are different tiers. So, the folks that, the students that do need the help, they'll be able to get targeted help, but it won't necessarily overlap. So, I guess then my, my other question that I had was really about the development, to the point about what they'll be allowed or be able to do. You know, I don't know if Dr. Champagne Lee has weighed in with regards to some of the programming that may be possible with this additional time. You know, obviously, Dr. Boyd with regards to the intervention piece of it. But I just, I think that what I have experienced as a parent with the advisory is that, not so much in sixth and seventh grade, but definitely this year, because that period was used as an INE, there was some feedback about forced time with that. So, that's where I asked about the autonomy piece of it, is how much students would really be able to elect to, you know, if they are in eighth grade, go and help out with the sixth grade, you know, in the music program or something like that? Because in terms of identifying need, I understand the value of that, but I think once the need has been identified, I think that's where the, like for Freckle, for example. I think that's where the feedback, to me, seemed to come into play, is that, okay, well, I don't really need help with this, but I don't have a choice.
Right.
So, I'm just wondering, you know, for the parents that are listening with the middle school schedule, that they're able to understand, and maybe some of them don't understand that all of that was happening to begin with. I don't know. But I'd like to understand a little bit clearer about just how it plays out. I don't.
Yeah. What this schedule will do is provide some flexibility in not only the tiers, but when we start really delving into, I mean, when you see that schedule, that's a daily schedule. But then, you break it down into six parts, into a letter-day schedule. And then, I mean, we can get into the weeds, but it'll get really complicated really fast. And we, we have some flexibility in when, you know, when rolling this out, we want to make sure that we're rolling it out at a time, or getting to those six days when we're ready. We are, we are spending a lot of time this year on the math part specifically. We're spending two days out of a cycle right now during 10th period, and the challenge we have is that, man, it comes right up on me. The challenge we have is that, all of a sudden, you know, when we find ourselves competing with, with 10th period, we have students, like you said, that say, like, you're, the only time that I have time to do my homework, because I'm participating in two other, you know, music ensembles, is during the time that you're asking us to do some of this INE time. And one of the reasons why we, you know, you know, in a way, have to say, like, we're either going to all go, we're going to be all-in or all-out on it, is because when we start trying to remove stu, you know, put students over in this area to do intervention, now we're really, we're making it difficult to know what to do with the other students. And then, when we start getting less purposeful with the other students, it can get complicated. So, with all that said, what we want to do is make sure that we are, we have flexibility within the whole schedule to make sure that we have options, and we have that in the schedule over those six days to make it happen.
Can I just interject? I want to just make it a little clearer and make sure that I'm envisioning MTSS the way that I know it to work. INE, once a, when a student's put into a group for INE, that's for a short period of time, because every six to eight weeks, you're checking data. So, a student may be in with a core group for six to eight weeks. At that six-weeks time, oop, something bubbles up, they need a more intensive intervention, and they're moving out. So, they probably, so they're going to, there's a lot of fluidity with this, I'm assuming, and that they're not necessarily going to be with the same group or doing the same thing throughout the year.
Yes, we are looking to rotate students at least quarterly. That's what we have implemented this year with our current intervention model, and it seems to be working well. So, based on the diagnostic data, both in the fall and then the winter administration, we have formed groups of students within the specific math domain that need the most support in that domain, and we've restricted kind of the teaching, the skills, the resources to then mirror that domain, which closely aligns to their classroom instruction. So, we've tried to pair it that way, and we'll probably use a similar model, while also considering what other progress monitoring will be used during that time to ensure that we're seeing at least 70% growth of our students who are identified in those intervention courses. I also just wanted to address your question. During that core time, where students who are not entered, who are not identified as needing intervention, they're going to have additional time with their classroom teachers. This will be time for them to dive into a myriad of projects. It might be a Math in Action, it might be reinforcement of skills. It won't be anything new, because we don't want the students who are identified for intervention to miss out on core content. So, it's going to be an enrichment or a reinforcement of the skills. It won't be anything new, but they will have twice a cycle to be able to see those teachers and to kind of extend their learning in those areas.
I appreciate you verbalizing that. So, and that is actually the impression that I got from this, so I understand it. I just really wanted it to be, again, because this is the first time it's rolled out publicly, I wanted to make sure that the questions that parents may have as they're watching from home, or they watch on the recap, that they're able to actually, you know, kind of think through some of the questions they may end up having. A lot of times, I find, folks don't necessarily know what questions to ask, because they don't necessarily, they don't get in the weeds, you know, sometime. How was school? School was good. Like, they don't, I get really a play-by-play almost by every period, but that's, I think, a unique situation. I don't think everybody has the luxury of that in their house. So, you know, it's hard to roll something out when this is your, you live and breathe this every day, and so, to deliver that in a package that everybody understands, I just wanted to try to break it down for.
Yeah. And I think at the end of the day, we just want all of the time to be purposeful for all students.
Correct, right.
So, there is no time where they're lingering, or they're not sure about what they're doing. We want to give teachers that allotment of time to extend further what they're doing in class, and we want to give students intervention, right, that intensification of services, as Amy spoke about earlier.
And I really appreciate that, because I, you know, I've watched this advisory conversation sort of come in an arc, you know, over the last four years, since I, I didn't know it was a thing. You have an elementary school kid, you don't know that's a thing, you know? And I just really appreciate the work that the administrative team and the curriculum team has put in to figuring out the best way to be purposeful, and also provide rigor, honestly, for every single child. Thank you very much for that.
For the elementary, speaking of the families coming in, like, so for something for them to kind of equate it to the tier time, the T-time. The win time, yeah. Or they all, now that we switched.
They call it win.
Now, they call it win.
Yeah.
I'm going back to when my kids were there, it was T-time.
Right.
But it's kind of this, it reminds me of, we're now moving to that model into the middle school level, where the middle school didn't have that model before.
No. And years ago, back when Dr. Klune was the assistant at West, and even when I served in that capacity, we had what was called a core period, where there was something like that, but not as clearly defined or delineated or intentional as what's being planned for our middle school students next year. And the other thing I wanted to point out is that periods at the middle school right now are 52 minutes, we're coming back to 46 to 48 minutes. That's how we're getting those three 30-minute periods to make available by grade level. So, we're shaving off those class periods that a few years ago, we extended to now be a bit briefer and aligned to what happens here at the high school, and then afford them that intentional, targeted instruction, or enrichment, in the cases of some. So, I think we wanted to present this to you as a board tonight. Now, we'll work on the communication campaign, and we'll take some of the questions that come afterwards as prompts and direction, guidance for how to articulate some of the communication that our principals and we here at District Office will help create and to inform parents. Because you're right, if you're not living it, you raise, it just raises lots of questions, and we don't want that. So, we'll work on our communication campaign to help our families understand what this is all about.
Dr. Russell, I have a question. Is that okay? So, my question was answered that I had on my notes in reference to the curriculum resources that were going to be used to support the SEL at the middle school.
Yes.
How is that piloting going to roll out? Is East going to pilot one program, and West pilot another program? Are they going to pilot them simultaneously in each building?
So, actually, the board has to approve the pilot, any pilot, and we're bringing that to you in February. We wanted to, again, introduce it tonight. There are two programs our middle schools are looking at. One is called Second Step, the other's called Character Smart, and they both focus on respectful interactions.
Character strong.
Character count or character strong?
Thank you, character strong. Thank you. And so, what we will present to you on February 5th is an opportunity for, in both schools, for about four weeks, I think, each, four to six weeks, they're going to pilot both programs in both schools, and then engage in those conversations about what went really well, what seemed to support effectively, maybe what not so well.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes.
Sorry, I got a list. First one, K through five, the autistic support, and maybe I just missed it. Or is the thought going to be K-1, 2, there'll be one teacher, and then 3, 4, 5? How are you dividing up? Because obviously, you can't have K and 5 legally in the same grade, or in the same class.
So, that's a good question. Yeah, right. It's a good question, because we just recently were wondering about, how do we support full-day kindergarten and avoid disruption to our Special Education District-wide classes? And we have classes that would be affected at Skipback, potentially South. Autistic support programming in both buildings. Right now, we have K through 2 at Skipback, three classes. We have 3 through 5 at South. The proposal is, as Dr. Boyd went over, and she'll talk more about this when she presents her special ed update the 5th, is to have two K-5 programs with individual teachers by span in both schools.
Okay.
And so, the ideal would be, Schwanxville and Skipback students would attend the Skipback program classes, Evergreen and South would attend the South program classes, but we would certainly divide the students with staff.
Would be four teachers then, two and two.
Yeah, I think it's, I think it's four, maybe it might even be five.
Four, possibly five. Okay, that makes sense.
Three and three, they're telling me. Thank you.
Okay, I just wasn't.
Three and three, yeah. Based on numbers, yes. But I noticed when Dr. Boyd was sharing that, again, first time we're bringing this to you, she'll go into a little bit more detail on the 5th, but I was wondering if that was actually something that wouldn't benefit from a little bit more explanation. So, we are proposing shifting our autistic support programs, working with our families to accomplish this, and try and get people closer, families closer to their home school, to the best of our ability.
No, it makes sense. I just wasn't, I was trying to wrap my head logistically around it.
Yeah.
Then, I was looking at, you know, again, everybody's doing phenomenal. We always look great numbers-wise, but of course, we want to continue to grow. So, I was curious, math has been a really big focus, but we've kind of stalled on the reading. So, like, when we look at slides 22, 23, 24, what thoughts have been to try and kind of get us? Has there been any talk as to what we could do to kind of maybe beef up the reading again? I mean, our focus has been on math where it needs to be, but I know that we've also kind of like, we've kind of plateaued a little bit, and that seventh grade well below was a little concerning on 24.
This one?
Slide 24.
Yeah, we tried to number the slides.
Oh, sorry. On my, on my version, it.
Yeah, we'll clean that up, but the numbers are down there, but they're very light. But I think this is the slide you're referring to?
No, keep going, next one.
Okay.
It's the one with the P-VAS.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Oh, I see.
Sorry, on mine, I can see what slide it is, sorry.
Gotcha.
So, like, you see seventh grade, well, like, so just, I'm just kind of trying to think, like, again, kind of keeping, being mindful, the fact that we're doing good, we look good in comparison to county, we look good in, you know, overall, we're still doing phenomenal, but we did kind of get a little stagnant, so.
So, we're excited to have a new humanities supervisor.
Hey.
To support, and you met her this evening, and we're really, we're really excited to have leadership in this area again, because there's a lot happening right now in the area of literacy, and it's been a major focus for us as a district. So, while we may be performing better than some of our comparison school districts, we're not performing where we want to be performing. We want a much greater percentage of our students demonstrating proficiency or advanced performance on the PSSA. That starts with early literacy. We're paying attention to the current research right now around structured literacy, and what pays off in students developing as readers. We're paying attention to that and working with our staff to figure out how we implement that in ways that will keep people with us and move our students forward. So, lots of it, you're right. So, lots of it, you're right. While we may be doing better than some other districts, we're not doing what we need to be doing. We're, our students are capable of much more and we need to tap into that potential. So, it continues to be a focus.
Dr. Campbell, I had that in my notes as well. And I just think that with the change in the middle school schedule, I think it affords a lot more opportunity for growth associated with that. Because I do think that, and that was kind of my reasoning tying the two together because in seeing the time and the effort that the middle schools have put in to the math piece of things, I think that's clear it paid off, right? So, I just feel as though that was how I equated it as I was looking at that because to me, especially since math is leveled but ELA is not, that's a conversation that we have had in a couple of different areas. And I would like to continue to have that conversation because I feel that not leveling ELA holds students back is really what I, is my personal, my personal view on the matter. So, I just, I'm curious if that's something that can continue to develop with regards to the schedule shift.
Yeah, we're certainly, and yes, the answer would be yes. We'll continue to monitor and adjust in response to meeting the needs of our students. This is a step in that direction and to more, more effectively and directly target the needs of our students at the middle level. And it's the data that's driving the need for the schedule change. It's the data that's telling us, we need to do something different. If you do what you've always done, you're going to get what you always got. And that saying really holds true in education. So, our middle school team, under the leadership of Dr. Sacks, Mrs. O'Sullivan, and some other central office administrators that have weighed in, are really trying to think in ways that will be intentional and purposeful for students. Yes.
I'm getting there. I really am.
That's okay.
Okay, so.
We're still within our two-hour time limit, Dr. Campbell.
I know, I know. See, I take one week off because of medical stuff and I come back with a list of questions. All right, so the other thing I was looking at was the civics.
Yes.
I am curious, has there been, have the two principals worked together to talk about? Has there a different approach in maybe how the teachers are teaching it at East versus West? I mean, it's not that big of a difference, but it is, I mean, there is a difference between performance at the two schools. I was just curious if maybe the approach or something is a little different?
You know, I don't. Right, I don't know that we can articulate what might be different, but it has raised questions for us. And again, something we'll take to our humanities supervisor and ask her to dive into because that is the question. What's happening for students in one school that may not be happening for students in the other school? And we need to think about that. And what's not happening in both schools to get more of these students to hit the benchmark and demonstrate proficiency or advanced performance?
Okay, two more areas. Post-graduation plans. You know, I love seeing that slide. It's always great to see students, but I just want to reiterate again, you know, not every student needs to go to college. We have a lot of students who go to trade schools, a lot of students who choose different career paths and they're doing very, very well. And I know, I don't know, I think it was a couple of years ago now, I watched at a high school function, they were saying farewell to students. And part of the farewell at the assembly or the thing at night was as each senior came up, they announced where they were going to college. And all I could think was, oh, what if there's one in that group who decided to not go to college and how are they feeling right now? And what is that pressure to be, to feel like they have to say they're going to a college? Or the feeling that community college is not, you know, good enough? I went to community college. I graduated there first and I have a doctorate. It's, it, it's an excellent school. I just, I really think that as educators, we really do need to make sure that we are doing things within the classroom to celebrate all the choices. And that includes when seniors are leaving, the celebrations and the way that we send them off. And it shouldn't be seniors lining up saying where they're going off to college. So, I think, I just want to put it out there again. And it reminds me when I see a slide like this that just as we get towards the end of the school year this year, just a little friendly reminder to everybody to support all students and what their post-high school career choices are.
So, I'd like to respond with a couple of thoughts to that statement because it really resonates. So, our high school counselors currently worry about having college flags displayed in the counseling center right now for that very reason. They don't want students to come in and feel obligated or guilty if that's not the path that they're choosing. The other thing I'll mention is that our Northmont Co. Vocational Technical Career Center has a waiting list of almost 200 students. And they are making very thoughtful changes in the programming to be able to accommodate more students and target the needs in the employment sector today. So, they're also working to support some of the strong interests that we're seeing that moves away from college. Or maybe it starts with Northmont Co. and then takes them into college. It's a slightly different path. So, there are some things that are happening and your sentiments are ones that I've heard from our counselors here at the high school, too. So, striking that balance and, and you know, maybe we need to think about how we present these data. It's not necessarily to call out a group, but to inform. However, that's come up more and more in recent years as we see the demand for individuals in those jobs. And we learn more about the cost of college and it just not being the right path for some students.
No, I appreciate that.
Dr. Campbell?
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry. Before we move on from this slide, could I ask the.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, if you were going to move on, I.
No, go ahead. Interject, please.
So, Dr. Russell, just having a personal curiosity, being in higher ed in regards to this slide. So, the 1.5 other, does that include those who joined the military possibly?
It does have military as one of the categories on the survey. So, that is always there as job, employment, gap year. Two-year education, Montco is separate. So, I think maybe I misspoke when I was speaking, you know, combining those two together. I, because the students, when they do go to a trade school, they actually choose the two-year typically. But we can actually look at rewarding that so that it says something different.
Okay, in regards to also trade school or whatever, does that also include apprenticeships that they may get, like, right in the workforce or?
So, it doesn't ask about apprenticeships. It does say, are you going into work? But there are areas where they can actually write in information so they can actually specify what they're actually doing. They tell us actually which, you know, where they're going. So, if they're going to, to a trade school, they actually will tell us the names. So, when I go through that, actually then disaggregate it.
And then just finally, anodally, do we have any idea of the types of schools that they're going to, four-year colleges, private, public, large, small, HBCUs? Do we have any of that kind of, just anodally, because they may, they may not report that?
We do and yes to all of those questions. Our students go all throughout the country. They go to big schools, they go to little schools, they go to publics, they go to privates. They do go to HBCUs. We actually had a bunch of students went on tours last year of some so they could actually get more exposed. But they do go all over. And I can actually compile the data and share it with Dr. Russell so the, so the board can see it.
Happy to share that in a weekly memo. Thank you, Dr. Moss.
Excuse me, Dr. Moss, when, when the students take the survey, can you add, can apprenticeships be added as a category for them to pick? Right, thank you.
We can certainly have the counselors have that survey, absolutely.
Okay, thank you. And so, I don't know, did we answer the question about military service? Do we know which of these categories might reference that? Or if it's not here, can we reference that?
There is a category. It's one of the, I think, one of the smaller blips on that.
Oh, I see. And it doesn't have a label?
I don't think it has a label on it.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Because there are students, I think there were about six or seven last year that went into the military.
Okay, we'll, we'll correct that. Is it the light blue one, do you think, Dr. Moss? That, that doesn't seem to have a line to it, so that could be it. We will, we'll correct that slide and share it. We'll correct that so that we, we inform you with the accurate information.
Dr. Campbell, did you have something else? Just one last question. Okay. So, getting into the student wellness, I have to say, I'm very excited to hear that we're, that you're going to be piloting the Character Strong and Second Step at the middle school level. I do think we need something at the middle school level, not just elementary. I would love to hear that we also get something at the high school level as well. I, you know, of the two, any, I would definitely lean towards whichever one has a component that really does focus on bullying prevention aspect, considering that seems to be quite an issue that we keep encountering. The other thing that I just want to give a shout out again, I say this all the time. You know, to all my fellow school psychologists, they're never, ever referenced when we talk about the mental health and the school wellness. It's counselors, social workers. It's never the psychologist. This district is, is not utilizing the school psychologists in the way that they have the capabilities to be utilized. They should not just be testing and report writing. They should be being picked up and used at Tier 2 and Tier 3 levels for risk and threat assessments, PREPARE, C-STAG, the ARBACR. They need to be doing that stuff. I just, every time we talk about student wellness, the psychs are just, they're never incorporated. They're never talked about. And I would love to, to say that I think they just kind of get forgotten by mistake, but when I hear and I talk with people in the district, they report back to me that the psychologists just are not utilized in that manner. And I think it's, there's a lot of information and resources that they have to them that they, they could really be giving you a good offering that you're missing out on.
So, let me follow up. I would, I would like to talk to Dr. Boyd a little bit more about that. We've had that conversation in the past and I'll follow up with the board in the memo with a more comprehensive response. But going back to the bullying comments, we are working through our results to the Culture and Climate Survey and looking forward to some of the data that again, will help prompt questions and guide us in a certain direction to support in ways that you're calling out. The data will really help us solidify direction. So, we're looking forward to that. So, if you haven't completed that survey, maybe you could do that. Thank you. Okay.
Does anyone else have any questions or thoughts?
I'm sorry. I was just thinking about the, look at my notes here, about the autistic support classes. I'm thinking like ahead as that cohort moves along through the school, how we're going to have a shift and probably need some support, that support moving with that cohort unless you get another large cohort of IE kids that are, you know, a large population, with the large population of students with autism. So, my mind is just thinking about just planning ahead for that as that cohort, large cohort shifts through the, you know, middle school and high school, how that's going to impact on the needs we're going to have as a district in that respect. So, that's just where my mind was and I just wanted to share that.
Thank you, Mrs. Sadler. I think Dr. Boyd loses sleep over that. But I think she's going to talk about students and the percentage of students identified as special ed in what category when she presents to the board. We have a special presentation in February on special education and she'll provide, she'll provide those annual updates that are often provided in March. She's doing it a month early this year because of the comprehensive plan that needs to be submitted to the state. So, I appreciate your comments and the prompting for thinking.
I don't see any other board comments. I don't know if the public would have any questions or comments with regard to the data presentation. This was, go ahead, Mrs. Maris. Oh, go ahead. Or do you have a comment? Please come up.
Sorry, piggyback off of something that you just said, Ms. Sadler. So, I didn't have a chance to look at this beforehand, but I'm assuming it'll be posted so we can go back and the community can look at it. But in greater detail, just listening to what Dr. Boyd was talking about with 45 new students in the, this year coming up. That's a lot of influx into the district. It sounds like, if I understand this correctly, that there are 17 students that will be going into a district classroom, which will have, then we'll have 28 students that are pushing in to the schools and the various classes. So, what I would ask the board to think about is looking at adding another inclusion specialist. Somebody was recently talking to me about that. If we want to ensure that we are giving best practices in, in inclusion and that all students are growing academically, we currently have one inclusion specialist for the 800-plus students in our district that have IEPs and this is K through 12. I would ask that as a, as a district, that we look at our surrounding schools, look at the numbers and look at the inclusion facilitators that are employed by our districts. And just to me, I'm sure that that could be nothing but helpful to our population. So, that's one thing I'm asking that our district looks at. And then secondly, and you don't have to answer it right now if you don't know, but I'm wondering if, looking at that slide, the pie slide with the different, where people go after graduate, after graduation, does that also capture our students who have IEPs? So, there are certificate programs that you can, students can go post-secondary. If not, I, I think I would like to see that included in years following, that that information is shared. And just wanted to know, our students with IEPs, are there accomplishments or their plans going forward? Are they reflected in these slides, in these post-graduation plans? That's it. Thank you.
Mrs. Maris, thank you for your, honestly, the continued advocacy is very, very, very helpful. It's a voice that's really needed. Thank you. I didn't know, Dr. Russell, do you want to speak to any of those things?
I would have to ask Dr. Moss if we capture all IEP students. I think we capture some, but I don't know that I can speak to whether or not 100% participate in the survey. And I don't know, Dr. Moss, if you know that tonight. We can certainly find that information out and share it.
So, last spring, out of the 422 students that graduated, 420 of them did fill out the form.
That's helpful. Thank you. And maybe we'll adjust the categories to be a bit more explicit about some of the paths that are available to our students. And in reference to the inclusion facilitator, if I may, that was a recommendation that was made last year but did not make it through with everything else as we prioritized resources. So, again, Mrs. Maris, I appreciate you advocating for that position. We have found lots of success with the individual currently serving in that capacity as part of our curriculum and instruction team and what happens for students as a result. So, I will certainly keep that in mind. Thank you.
All right, with no other board comments and no other public comments, that brings us to 3.03, Notice of Video Recording Disclaimer. And then 3.04 is adjournment. Thank you for a wonderful data presentation.
Thank you.
Really appreciate everybody's hard work and honestly, it is, it is seen and it's very much appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you.